Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our November 22, 2022 City Council meeting. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the Council President and the Ward Four City Councillor. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting laws, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity. With somebody that just logged on. Okay. It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as City Councillors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive. It will not accept it at City Meeting. I'd like to begin by introducing the City Councillors and City staff that are present. We have Jason Grow, At-Large Councillor. We have Sean Nolan, who's the Vice Chair of the City Council in Ward Five. We have Tracy O'Neil, who is Ward Two City Councillor. We have got Tony Gross, who is At-Large, Frank Majota, who is Ward Three, Jeff Worthley, who is At-Large, Scott Memmard, who is Ward One, and Jamie O'Hara, who is At-Large. So all members of the Council are here. I'd like to introduce members of City staff that are with us tonight. Madam Clerk, Joanne Asinos is our City Clerk. Thanks, Joanne. We have Kathy Clancy, who is Chair of the Gloucester School Committee, Greg Berger, who is our Mayor, Ben Lummis, who is our Superintendent. Welcome, Mayor. Joe Lucido, who is representing Public Works tonight. Welcome, Joe. We have Joe Cahill, who is our CAO. We've got Suzanne Egan, who is our Corporate Attorney. And let me see if we have any other folks that are on the call that I need to introduce. Oh, of course. Where's Kenny? He's not on my screen. Ken Coster is our Auditor. Thank you. And
I'm Toby.
Yeah, I'm Toby, who is our Director of Constituent and Communications.
And Holly Dogwell.
And Holly Dogwell is our HR Director. Thank you.
John Dunn.
John Dunn. Oh, my gosh, John, how can I not? We've been talking to you for the last 10 minutes. You were the first one on the call. Oh, he just, he just spit it out off, but John is our CFO. So, so welcome, everyone, and we're happy that you're here. Right now, we have 25 attendees. So that, so I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to call the First Order of Business.
The First Order of Business is Oral Communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the Council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The Council President shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak to the City Council? I see right now two hands. So, Joanne, would you bring one of the two in? And please introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to the Council for anything that's not on the agenda. Keith, you have the floor. Introduce yourself and your address.
Hello, my name is Keith Palazzola from 57 Western Ave. And I hope everybody's having a great evening. So I just wanted to, I had a concern, I guess you could say, pertaining to the status of your online meetings, Zoom meetings, such as what we're doing right now. Throughout COVID, you know, it became the norm to, you know, use these Zoom meetings because we were all in fear of getting sick and such. And I gotta say that it is actually turned into a great convenience, and not only a convenience, but I feel like a lot of the subcommittees now have been, have gone back to in-person meetings. And, you know, for myself, you know, that I was partaking in a regular subcommittee meeting, but even beyond myself, it became apparent that there may be a lot of people, a lot of citizens, and you guys might know better than I do, that would really find it useful to be able to still attend all these subcommittee meetings by Zoom. And I think the technology is very simple to use, and it just would be a great convenience. And for all those people that, you know, might have a physical disability, or, now again, I'm speaking, you know, to, you know, for things you guys know, I'm sure, as well, but it'll be a great convenience for the elderly and such. Whoever can set up, you know, a computer or have one set up for them to be able to take part in these meetings. And I would really, really hope that the City Council and the Mayor might, you know, take a notice to the fact that we should be able to use the technology to invite as many people as we can into the process. That's all I consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, so much. And I'll just mention that, you know, we on the City Council hope that by the beginning of February that we're back at Kairos, and our goal is to have true Zoom meetings as well as present meetings. So we call that true hybrid when we offer the both, the best of the best, to the members of the public. So that's our goal right now, and that's what we did starting last week with our Standing Committee meetings, where we began having meetings that were onsite, in a room large enough for whomever wanted to attend at the Harvard Masters office as well as Zoom. So we are doing true hybrid right now. But I will let administration speak to that with the response that they sent to you, and it will be in the packet in two weeks. And I appreciate you being on the call. So thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Raised your hand. Do you have a question on that, or are we ready for the second?
No, I was just gonna suggest that you let people know that we are, in fact, going to be having exactly what you said, hybrid meetings of all the subcommittees and the City Council subcommittees until March, when we plan to go full hybrid for meetings. So, well done.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, I think Nancy Sullivan has her hand raised. So Nancy, would you come on board? And we welcome you. You can introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to speak to the Council for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, great. My name is Nancy Sullivan. I live at 26 Grapevine Road, adjacent to the Orchard Road Development. I'd like to back up what Bob Shea has written in a letter to the members of this, of the Council and to others in the administration of this city. This is a neighborhood of single-family dwellings. The two-and-a-half acre piece that is being developed had what could be considered a lot on it, which over the years had grown into a tree-filled area with much underbrush and diversity of plants. It was the home of many small mammals, and the trees were filled with birds, some of who nested and others who rested during their migration. A family of crows lived there, and they warned the smaller birds when a hawk was in the vicinity. It was quiet and shady. Someday in September, we woke up to see all the trees in that lot being cut down. Logs hauled away and branches being fed into a chipper. It lasted a few weeks. It was a great shock to the neighbors. No one knew it was going to happen so soon. There had been some inquiries into possibly buying part of the property, but no one seemed interested in dividing the lot. It sold for a little over $2 million. There were 30 to 50 trees destroyed. There are no birds. Some of the small mammals have been seeking refuge in neighboring yards where there is more cover, but their nests and winter preparations have been destroyed. Needless to say, this has changed the character of the neighborhood and has traumatized some of our neighbors who have lived here most of their lives. The influx of people and cars, the increase in traffic, the possibility of problems with sewer, water pressure, and electrical service with this development will be detrimental to this neighborhood. We hope that this doesn't happen to other neighborhoods, and we hope that there is some way to ameliorate the impact of this development. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Nancy, for coming on and speaking to us. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak to the City Council for up to three minutes on matters not on the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Council Worthy, you have the floor.
Did we get the address of the last speaker, Nancy Sullivan? I'd like to know the neighborhood she's referring to. Sorry if I missed it.
Sorry, I thought she introduced that.
I may have missed it.
Joanne, did you take her address down?
26 Grapevine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, I see no other hands raised. Madam Clerk, do you agree with me? Okay, so I'll call for the next order of business.
Next order of business is the presentation from the Administration School Committee and Superintendent Lummis regarding an update on the new school and related issues.
Great. And I'd like to introduce our Mayor Greg Berger, who will introduce the members that are here to speak to us and introduce this topic. So Mayor Berger, you have the floor. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So over the last several months, well, I guess the 10 months that I've been in office, there've been questions now and again about what's going on at the East Vets site, the new school, what's going, what's going to happen at the East Gloucester School, what's going on with the softball field being relocated to Green Street. And since your body has five new members, the school committee has two new members, and obviously I wasn't here either during all this discussion, we thought it would be a good idea to give an overall update. Now that the litigation has been resolved, we can talk openly about where we stand, and so we had to do just that tonight. So we're going to have John Dunn start off with sort of a financial overview of some of the votes and loan orders that were put forward. Superintendent Lummis and Chairperson Kathy Clancy will talk about the current status of the East Vet site on Webster Street. Joe, in his undisclosed location, will be talking about the status of the playground, sorry, the field going over at Green Street. And then Jill will wrap things up with a discussion about a look forward to what will happen at East Gloucester School once the kids have left for good. And also on the line is Susie Egan, if there are any other related questions that she may be able to help with. So with that, I will hand it over to John, and then John will introduce Ben and Kathy and so forth.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and Councillors. So again, you know, we have a $66.7 million loan order out there in order to construct the new, the new school. I'm very happy to say that we are on budget and on time. So as we move forward, this should be able to be a position where we're able to get the new, the children into the new school and the staff in September of 2023. So at this point, we're about 60% through the project. We're kind of front-loaded a little bit on construction and backloaded on things like furniture fixtures and things that are, will come in at the very end of the project. We have now signed the project funding agreement with MSBA, and that will probably, as we move along, give us about $10 million in, in funding from their commitment, and that should happen sometime within the next 90 days, 90 to 120 days, as we put information into the system. So at this point, we have borrowed $20 million against the city's commitment to fund the school. We are very lucky to have borrowed that at a little bit less than 2%, and we did that in September of 2021. At this point, the city's commitment is probably another 11 and a half, 11 and a half over the course of the next couple of years. And we're going to try and, you know, basically borrow that, those funds to make it affordable for the city and the taxpayers as we move forward. And we are very lucky to have, you know, a very competent staff of supporters, the OPM, the design firm, and the construction firm. So we are on project. We are, you know, on schedule, and we are on budget. So that, that's very important as we move forward. We were very concerned a bit about how certain things within inflation, you know, supply chain might have impacted this, but we are very happy to say that, yeah, we're, we're there. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna meet our target in budget and timing.
Great. Thank you, John.
Okay, so next up is Superintendent and Kathy. I don't know which of you would like to go first.
I'll just say a few things while Ben is lining up his presentation. Yet again, this is another really successful project with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And our timing on this project is really important. The projects to date are seeing increases as high as sometimes 28% on their cost. So even though we've been working this project within budget, there have been decisions that have been made that have not undercut any of, you know, the, the goals of the project. And as John mentioned, our owner's project manager, CBRE Hery, and WT Rich, our contractor, and Doren Whittier have done a really, really good job of keeping things moving along. And I highly recommend you look at the project website. There's, in some of our meeting minutes, because every other meeting we have, one is sometimes a drone video, and then the other one is what's called open space, where they literally do a walk into the building, kind of walk around, and you can really get a feel for what is happening inside and how the construction really layers on. And as John said, we're continuing to work on the furniture selections and those, and working towards getting orders in, you know, with, given the timeframe of what they're expected to be delivered. So we're all pretty happy that it's moving along smoothly.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. And Superintendent Lummis, would you unmute yourself? And we are eager to, to hear from you. You are still muted, Superintendent.
Thank you. Can you see a presentation in front of you right now?
We can.
Okay, great. And if I do that, does it become a slideshow?
It's loading. Yes, it does. Beautiful.
So a part of this would be showing some folks some photos inside and outside the building, but what you have right there is actually, on the left-hand side, is a rendering of the design. On the right-hand side is a real-life photo. So as you can see, they're starting to match up in real life, which is a pretty big deal. You can see some of the windows are in there. That's the, that's the gymnasium that you're looking at on the right-hand side. And on the right, and also on the right-hand side, you see the silver sheathing is where we're going to have some circular windows as well, as you can see in the design on the left. So just wanted to show that I think that's a, just a, when you have a drawing, it was made a few years ago, and you see it come to life, it's, it's pretty exciting. And, you know, I would just want to make sure I temper my enthusiasm here because I don't want to be too excited, but, you know, this is a really big deal, this school. We're going to show you some pieces and parts of it, but it has fantastic things on the inside that we're building, and "we" meaning the city is building. This is a whole group effort, but, so I'll just keep an update on a few things. Kathy and John have already given you the headline, which is, of course, that the building project remains on schedule, on budget, and as they both have said, that is no small feat in today's client, construction climate. So we are really pleased with the project team, Doren Whittier, WT Rich, and then also our owner's product manager, CBRE Hery. They are just a fantastic team. The school, as I think folks know, has been named through an inclusive and community-oriented process that was led by our students from both schools, and that name is East Veterans Elementary School, which we're pretty excited about. And then, as John mentioned about the product funding agreement and that reimbursements will begin shortly. So that's also good news. On the right-hand side, that's the back of the building. You see there, and windows are going in, and also some temporary windows as we speak. So window installation is one of the big pieces right now, and you see that there on the back of the building. Just a quick background, because as Mayor Berger said, there are five new members, and probably some folks listening in today who maybe haven't been paying close attention for the last seven years, because that's when, in June 2016, is when this project began, actually six years ago. And that's with a statement of interest. And then August 2020, we are approved by the Mass School Building Authority for funding reimbursement, as John explained earlier. November, December, November and December 2020 is when the Gloucester voters and also the prior City Council approved funding. And then construction started in July 2021. So we're, you know, about a year and, and four months or so into construction, and we are on schedule for an August 2023 move-in, and that'll be in time for the 20, for next school year. And then John talked about the finances here with the state reimbursing us for about $27 million total as we go through the rest of the project. So that's the front of the building. What you're, what you're looking at primarily with the brick is what we call Building A. The center part there is being faced with metal, metal panels, white and colored, and blue, various forms of blues, and that's ongoing right now. This is the academic wing, and on each floor, there are four classrooms of two different grades. So each floor, there are four classes. I got the bottom four, bottom floor, four classrooms for kindergarten and first grade, and then on the second level, four classrooms each of second and third grade. And on the top level, the older kids, four classrooms each of fourth and fifth grade. So eight classrooms per level, and then also a variety of common learning spaces, small group spaces and, and the like. So this is just to give you a sense of the schedule, so you can see what, what's happening now and what's to come. So you see where the arrow is, is November of 2022, all through framing, all through, you know, in terms of the roof being finalized these days, facades being worked on, you've seen that in the, in the photos. And we're also getting the finishes right now, and also some site work, too, and I'll give you an update on that. But you can see that 2023, in the summertime, is when we are slated to finish next year. So what you have here on the right-hand side is again, overview site, Building A on the left, which I spoke about. That's the academic wing. Building B, I'll talk about more in a second. That's sort of what we call the common areas. And then you can see in the back, the playground and playing fields, and then all, that's for the older grades. And then in the front kindergarten, kindergarten playground in the front, which is near the bus loop here. I hope you can see my cursor. So in terms of construction, as folks who travel by 11 Webster can see, there's a lot of progress every day, every week. At this point, Building A, which is on the left, the academic wing, whoops, sorry, one second here, is essentially weather tight with, and we're on, going installation of the metal panel system, which is that exterior I pointed out to you, continuing the window installation. Sheet rock has happened on all levels and continues on, on Level Three, and we're actually painting classrooms right now. So we are well along on the interior of Building A and also installing acoustical ceiling tile grids. That means that the plumbing, all the plumbing rough-in, all the electric rough-in is complete, is essentially complete in Building A. They continue to do some data wiring, that sort of thing, but we are sort of moving into some of the, not the final stages there, but, you know, real sort of stages such as painting and finishing, that sort of stuff. On, on Building A, which is common spaces, and this is where the main entrance is, you're looking at the sort of two-story atrium here, at the second level, you see that laminated wood beams there, which are just great-looking, we think, with the turnbuckle system. And this, Building B houses the music and art classrooms. That is new for the East Gloucester community to have those kinds of rooms. A large media center, learning commons, which will be just sort of state-of-the-art and a great place to learn and learn together and collaborate for, for our students and our classes. Gymnasium with a full stage, and as I mentioned, the main entrance and the offices. So that interior wall frame, framing on Building B is ongoing. Curtain wall, which is the very large windows on the exterior of the building, and also on the interior of the buildings, well, the elevator was delivered last week, and that's, that's installation, that is beginning this week. And then, as I mentioned, for Building B, it's a couple steps behind Building A, so we're continuing to do the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough-in on all levels. And on the, on the outside, we have asphalt binder on most of the site, but we're completing the roadway prep to, to complete the asphalt binder, and that's sort of the, the step before you put the final surface on. And also granite curbing installation has been ongoing for a while and continues. You'll see a picture of that in a moment. So that's construction. And then the other piece of that, that's very complicated work, very detailed work, but as complicated in many ways is bringing the two school communities together. So really bringing the East Gloucester School community, the Veterans, Veterans School community together, two very different communities in lots of ways, different traditions, different sites, different schools, different approaches in a variety of ways. And so that'll, that's work, it's ongoing. We started last school year, but we'll continue for, you know, a number of years to come, which is when any two organizations merge together. There's a lot of work to bring the employees, the staff together, obviously, but we also are bringing, of course, families together as well. So in terms of bringing staff together, a lot of, lots been going on, joint professional development on instruction, special education, and teaming. Joint staff meetings have been going on. We started that at the end of last school year, and they have, have been happening a month to month. A joint book study in an area around trauma-informed schools. Teachers are working across both buildings, especially in special education. And then we put the leadership in place in, in, in both schools, and both leaders, Principal Matt Fusco and Assistant Principal Christie Lambert will be the leadership going forward into the new, into the new combined school. So that's pretty exciting, and they're working across both schools right now. We're also bringing families together. So the PTOs have been fantastic in terms of having joint meetings and planning joint activities. You see on the right there a picture of the PTO officers who toured the building just yesterday. That's Melissa Harrington, Robyn Towne, Judy Fleck, and Justine Laurie. So they were able to see the building yesterday with Matt, with Principal Matt Fusco. They have been great in coming together and thinking through how to, how to build bridges this year. They did the trunk or treat together at Sage Ford Park. They, they're doing the Santa Parade this weekend together. So East Veterans will have a big float and a band there. And then at the same time, because they're still separate schools, and they're maintaining separate traditions and events, particularly for East Gloucester, as they say goodbye to their, you know, their school building, we want to make sure that, that both school communities have that space to really say, you know, goodbye and have closure in their own existing school community. So those are very, very important pieces, and, you know, complicated, ongoing, but very, but essential. And then just a couple more photos here. Kathy mentioned this, but the work we're doing a lot now are furniture fixtures and furnishing. So, you know, tables, chairs, soft seating, you know, we'll get into doorknobs and things like that. I mean, very, very detailed work that we have an interior subcommittee, the Building Committee, working on. And then, of course, we'll be also, we'll continue to work with the city on signage and safety improvements. That includes ensuring that this traffic study recommendations are fully enacted to make sure that that site, you know, works very well with the surrounding streets as well. You see, that's the granite curbing that's been going on, going in and installed. Quite a bit of that's installed, but still a little bit more to do. That's on the right-hand side there. Couple interior shots, just so you can see. I think there's a classroom on the left, and this may be on the right, two classrooms, because every pair, pairs of classrooms will be joined by a movable wall that is acoustic, acoustically sound, sound, meaning in the sense that it's, it blocks all sound from going through, but it does allow us to open up the doors between two classrooms, say, two fourth-grade classrooms or two third-grade classrooms. So those teachers and students can really collaborate very easily. So those teachers and students can really collaborate very easily on a regular basis. So I think that's, that's what you're looking at too, is you're looking at one classroom here into the second classroom, I believe. And then, just so you all, everyone knows, city councillors, but also folks on, on the, on the meeting here, we, our product website is updated weekly with new videos or photos, the latest news. Weekly updates, we have weekly updates from our project team. A quick, easy link on the building site from that, that people can go to and and also, you know, minutes and prior, you know, meeting recordings and presentations for meetings. But it is a wealth of knowledge, both historical and current. And if city councillors ever, ever want to know what the latest is on our weekly updates, you can just go to that, go to our website there. And you'll see on the right hand side, a weekly update link, which is, which is there every single week. So I'm going to stop there, I think, I think we're all set. And see if folks have any. I'll, I'll turn it over to the chair for, or Mr., or Mayor Verga for whoever's next.
Okay, thank you, Ben. If, if I may, Ben, so next up, we have, we're going to talk about Green Street. You all may recall that part of the arrangement when the decision was made to build the new school at the Webster Street site. The softball field would be moved over to the Green Street area adjacent to Gloucester Crossing. One of the things that was holding us up apparently, well, not apparently, was access to the Green Street site from Gloucester Crossing. We recently signed a licensing agreement with Sam Park and Market Basket. And we now have access to the site, so the project can proceed. So I will now turn it over to Joe Lucido. He's still on the screen, Joe? I think he's there somewhere.
He is.
Okay, so Joe, if you could take it away.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. So as the mayor just alluded, you know, the one hurdle that was remaining was gaining access to the site. There was no way we'd be able to run construction through the Green Street neighborhood. So that was a huge piece. So now that that is in place, this project is in line to be bid in early 2023. We will shortly after bidding, we will award the project and we'll go right into construction. We anticipate the field to be ready for use late spring of 2024. Through this whole process, we've been working with the local leagues that use these fields. Currently, you know, Cape Town Women's Softball, who we engaged with very early, when the school project started moving forward. We've met with multiple times and, you know, we've made arrangements through our scheduling, using other fields to temporarily house them. You know, during this delay. Also, the Cape Town Girls Youth Softball League, also a big user of the field, as well as there are a couple intermediate baseball teams that are, you know, not quite Little League, but not at the Babe Ruth level. They call it a 50 70. Those groups use that, were using Meadows as well. And then the other group that's impacted by the Green Street construction would be the Cape Town or Gloucester Fishman Youth Football Program. They primarily practice at Green Street late August, right through the end of November. So with the construction of the new field, there are, we're basically trying to create a similar condition to what we had at Meadows Field. So the, the field has been designed. It's been designed using ASA slow pitch regulations. So we have a, you know, fenced outfield. We will be reusing the lights from Meadows Field. Those will be transferred up to Green Street. The scoreboard that was just erected at Meadows Field shortly before it closed will be moving up to Green Street as well. As part of the project, there are going to be about 40, roughly 40 parking spots, which should be accessed off of Market Street, the, the Sam Park property. There will be portable toilets on site. The problem we have there is there's no sewer in that immediate area and it would be cost prohibitive. It would probably run in the ballpark of 250,000 plus dollars to actually install permanent bathrooms up there. So what we've asked our design team to put together something a little more appealing than just a standard porta potty. So we are working on building an enclosure with lights, lockable doors. They still would be portable in nature, but it wouldn't be, you know, your, your typical porta potty that you would see on a construction site. So we're, we're trying to clean that up. Also, as part of the project, upgrades to the rest of the park itself. We are creating a pedestrian walking path that goes around the perimeter of the whole park itself. Right now, we have a path that runs from Green Street down to the Market Basket Road with pedestrian lights. And we will continue that loop similar to what we did at Burns Field. So that we can asphalt walking path around the whole site itself with pedestrian lights that run the perimeter. We will also be resurfacing the basketball, the current basketball courts up there. They're not in terrible shape, but as part of the project, we're going to resurface that. And then we're also going to resurface the parking lot off the Green Street end of the playground. That really, in a nutshell, that's, you know, that's where we are. You know, we're hoping for favorable numbers as far as bidding. And like I said, now that we've, we've able to gain access to the site with our construction equipment, we're, we're looking to, to get this project moving forward quickly.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Back to Mayor Verga to introduce your next panelists.
Great, so before I go on to Jill at East Gloucester. Joe mentioned favorable numbers. It's point, point out that part of the borrowing that was done for the project includes Meadows and East Gloucester School. And John will be available after this, further questions on that. But part of the deal was that East Gloucester School would be torn down and made into open space. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jill and take it from there.
Thank you. Welcome, Jill.
Thank you, Madam Chair and to the councillors. I'm here to bat a little cleanup. So I just want to, a couple of things to clear up. I just want to let folks know that what we have right now is a license agreement with Sam Park and Ma, Market Basket for construction access. And we are still working on the, on the permanent, on the permanent easement. So stay tuned, we'll keep you guys posted on that. As the mayor just referred to, the previous council had approved a 4.2 million dollar loan order for the costs associated with the project that we knew would not be reimbursable from MSBA. Again, John can answer the detailed questions about it, but that basically covers the swing space at St. Anne's School. The creation of the Green Street field and the demolition of the East Gloucester School. So just, I wanted to clear those up a little bit. And when it comes to East Gloucester School, this is the kind of fun visioning part, right? So some, once we know the kids are settled and in the new East Veterans School site, the school committee will take some steps to declare a surplus and turn it back over to the city, at which time it'll become the responsibility of the city to take down the building. And then the next steps, as we know, we are required by Article 97 legislation to keep it as open space. So what the vision looks like beyond open space for that location is where we are looking forward to engage with the public again. We have committed with Councilmember Mard to do some local ward meetings around that visioning. And we have, the mayor has worked with our community development director to put it as part of the comprehensive planning initiative. So the vision for the use, the kind of more refined use beyond open space is yet to come. So we look forward to, we hope everyone on this call and everyone in the area will help us talk about what the, what the needs are in the area and what the needs are across the city that we can, that we can meet with this new open space opportunity. And I think, I think, oh, I do want to mention, this was important to the mayor. We will engage with the PTOs, the Committee for the Arts and others to go through the building and make sure we don't lose any treasures that are in the current East Gloucester building. I think that's something important to the mayor as, as someone who was, who was, went through the fuller site and, and what have you. If you see the Lincoln statue and the mayor's office, that is a piece of that. So know that we will engage and make sure that we make sure we take any of the treasures that are left in East Cluster School out of the building before demolition.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Back to the mayor.
Yes, so, so Madam President, that is our presentation. We are all here standing by to answer any questions that you or the other councillors may have. So with that, we are done.
Great, thank you so much, all of you. So I'll open it up for questions, but councillors, we have a lot on the agenda. So let's make sure we stick to the topic of this discussion. Does anyone have a question to ask of administration or any of the panelists? I'm councillor O'Neill.
Hi, thank you. I have a bunch of questions, so.
Can we start with one and then we'll, great, thank you.
So regarding the Webster Street School, six, I have a question about the 66.7 million dollar loan. We took that loan out through the state, correct?
The loan through the state? I'll let John handle that, but it was just a borrowing. The state's reimbursing a portion of it, if that's what you mean.
So who, who was the loan with? I don't know that.
I'll, I'll hand that to John.
John Dunn, you have the floor.
All right, so, so we actually borrowed the money. So in, in fact, what we need to have is an appropriation in place to spend the totality of what we think we're going to spend. And at this point, we're expecting that the, the city expenditure is going to be around 40, 42 million dollars. And the, the money that comes in from MSBA is going to be about 26 billion dollars.
Does that answer your question, councillor?
Well, 42 and 26 is 68 million dollars. And the loan is for 66 million dollars. So I'm just, that 66.7 million dollars. Who did we get the loan with? Who did we borrow the money from?
We, we borrowed the money from.
What do we owe that to?
In, in the same places we borrow money from every time we go out for debt issuance. And we go out for debt issuance twice a year in June and again in September mostly. And that's the kind of the, the, you know, where the situation we are. And, you know, people bid on the debt. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so my computer, I guess my internet's not all that great here. So I didn't, I didn't hear you answer, who, who did we borrow that money from?
We, we borrowed the money from, you know, investors that, that always bid on the useful debt.
Okay.
Which is, which is, you know, double tax exempt.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, so then we filed, we signed a contract with MSBA for 10 million, right? So they're going to contribute 10 million. So that brings us down to 56 million, correct? 56.7.
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
All right, so, so basically, I'm, I'm going to be talking about just round numbers here.
Okay.
So basically, MSBA has made a commitment to the city for 25 million dollars, which could go up to 26 billion dollars, depending on what the total expenditure of the project is.
Okay, that's better. Okay. So the cost to the city is roughly about 20, 42 million.
The cost of the city is going to be around 42 million. We don't know yet. And that's not going to be, not going to be until probably 18 months from now.
Okay, understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's take someone else's questions and we can get back to you, councillor O'Neill. If no one else has any questions, councillor Majota.
No questions, just a comment, just by looking at the presentation. I think the school looks great. I'm excited to be able to bring together these two communities. And one, I think that's just great for the town and just great work all around with the school committee, the administration and whoever else is involved to create this. It's, it's exciting to see, and I'm excited to see the school open next year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Who else hasn't spoken that would like to ask a question? Scott Memmerd.
I just like to thank the administration and all the speakers for bringing us up to speed on what's going on. There's a lot of curiosity, obviously, in the, in the commi, community. And in particular, in Ward One, we'll look forward to those public discussions that the mayor referred to in terms of the future of the East Gloucester School site. And we'll look forward to working with the mayor and Jill on fleshing those out and having some community input into those. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. And councillor, thank you for hanging in there for this part of the, the meeting. I know you're not feeling well and it's appreciated that you're, that you're, you're staying on. But if you need to leave, we totally understand. Thank you. Councillor Grow.
Just want to ask very quickly on the open space at East Gloucester, when that's torn down. Are, are we looking at incorporating all of the, the city land that is associated next door to that? There's, there's the, the wildlands that go down towards Richdale's areas and all that. Can we keep, can we keep that in, in mind as well when we look at that as an entire package?
Mayor Verga has his hand raised.
Yeah, I think that would be, once we get to that phase, it'd be a great opportunity to look at the thing holistically. You know, what's there that was used by the school and what might be adjacent that's owned by the city. But that would be part of the, the visioning that we do through the, the master planning process, so the CPI and the ward meetings. But yes, good point, Jason, we'll, we'll look at it all.
And just a tiny little thing, it has really only to do with people who actually have bricks there. But I sent a note to Jill already about that. But when they, when they decide to tear up the playground area, there's a lot of bricks that people bought for fundraising 15 some odd years ago. I'm sure a lot of people would like to have those as souvenirs. So just keep in mind not to chuck them out before people have a chance to claim them. I want mine.
Great suggestion, thank you, Jason. Who else hasn't asked a question yet that would like to? Okay, see none. What's anyone else that's already spoken? Councillor O'Neill, your hands raised. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that in case of an emergency, the students and staff are to stay in place? Is that correct?
I will let the superintendent answer that question.
It very much depends on the type of emergency and situation. And, and, and even within a given situation, depends what's happening at that moment. So it's, it's hard to, yeah, so there isn't one blanket response. You know, if it's a fire, if it's a fire, for example, it's obviously evacuation. If it's someone who, who is, who is ill in the building, it's usually people stay in place, you know, in their, in their, in their classrooms. If it's an intruder, there, there are a variety of things that folks do. You know, depending on the situation. So it really is just, there's, there's a whole variety of, of situations and responses to given situations.
Okay, so if it's a fire, where would they evacuate to? What's the plan?
Yeah, so it's, it's out of the building and then they evacuate, they have, they typically have, you know, onsite locations in all our schools. And then every school has an offsite evacuation location for, you know, a more significant, you know, or for a significant emergency, you know, where they, where being on site is not safe. And so just, just to be clear, you know, we haven't got the operationalizing of those plans at this point. That's something we'll work on after the, after the new year. Including identifying evacuation sites. You know, the Veterans School had a long term evacuation site, I believe, up the hill. I can't remember the name of the building, honestly, I'm just escaping right now. But we'll have to, because it's a lot larger school, probably have to have a couple of different sites.
Great, thank you.
And I have one more question.
Okay.
I live right down the street, so I, I see the, the construction every day, a couple of times a day. And it looks to me like you cut trees down right up to the. And it looks to me like you cut trees down right up to the state fence to the highway. Is that true? And if it is true, will they be replaced? That's my last question.
Uh, I, I don't know, I just don't know specifically exactly where trees were cut down. I think, I think they were, uh, I just, I just don't recall, honestly. Um, I, I, uh, and, and don't have the details in front of me of, of exact, exact site plan. Uh, we can certainly, um, go through the city clerk to get that answer to all city councilors about any replacement of trees. I just, I'm sorry, I just don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, that's okay. Um.
And because. Tracy, uh, Mayor Berger has his hand raised, so.
I mean, thanks, I was just gonna say for trees, obviously, it's, it's very important for us citywide for trees, and we're actually hoping to do four hundred new trees for the four hundredth anniversary. But, um, we, we'll get an answer to you about what the plan is going forward and what, if there are trees going in place, what makes the most sense in terms of what species of tree.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one more question.
Okay, continue.
Um, there was a fence, there were two fences, they were side by side. I believe one was for the state highway and one was for the school. So it looks like there's only one fence there now. That's what made me think that trees were cut down and that the school fence was removed. So will there be one fence or will there be two fences? I, I don't know.
Um, so the chair of the school committee would like to, um, to speak, Kathy Clancy, you have the floor.
Yes, so yes, the state fence stays and there will be a fence around the school property. So there will be two.
Right, but there won't be a fence parallel to the state fence, correct?
Yes, there will.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, counselors, I think we've exhausted our questions, and, um, I think it's been extraordinarily informative and timely and how exciting it is that we are, um, on track, we are on budget, and this is just really exciting, and both PTOs are working together, as are all the teachers and staff. And, um, what, what a great, um, what a great initiative for our city. So thank you for being here. And, um, you can have your late dinner now, whatever your plans are, or you can just hang out with us if you'd like. Um, so, um, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. Can I just say, I, I appreciate you, you, you giving us the opportunity to speak, and you know, this was a, a controversial when it began. I think we're all excited about where we are now and where we're heading. And if councils ever have any questions, you know, go through my office and we're happy to answer what we can and get the answers to what we can't.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for your hard work. Appreciate it. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you, and I will turn control of the meeting over to Counselor Nolan, who chairs O and A. Counselor Nolan, could you unmute yourself so we can hear you?
I see that Marco Palazzola is on the side, if we could bring him in, join.
Great. And I, and I will mention that he was at, um, our first hybrid onsite meeting, which was very exciting to have him in the room with us. So, um, Counselor Nolan, you have the floor. Thank you.
Excellent, Marco, how you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, how are you, Sean?
Can't complain, and, uh, if you could just give the city council a little bit of brief history about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Board of Health.
Sure, um, I'm a longtime Gloucester resident. I grew up in Gloucester. I am currently a nurse practitioner, working in primary care, uh, out in Middleton. Um, and I heard about the position for the city council, and I thought what better an opportunity to kind of be part of, uh, giving back to my community than, than joining the Board of Health, so, uh, I applied to it and here I am, hoping to, uh, provide some kind of, uh, professional wisdom, I suppose, uh, with respect to medicine and, and things that I otherwise know about, uh, the city.
Excellent. Thank you, Marco. Um, so I'd like to read the motion. Um, on a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Majota, the ordinance administration commu- committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council appoint Marco Palazzolo fulfilling the unexpired term to the Board of Health, term to expire two fourteen twenty-three, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, it was seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Is there a discussion, counselors? Counselor Nolan.
Uh, I've known Marco for a long time. He's a, a great asset to the community. I got to watch him, uh, basically grew up going to the service and, uh, very excited for him to take this position. I think that he's going to be very active. Uh, he's got a brilliant mind for a younger individual, and, uh, he's definitely going to be entertaining to have around and learn from. And I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other discussion, counselors, on the motion? Seeing none, um, roll call vote, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Absolutely.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Muted.
Muted, Counselor Worthley?
Yes, and thank you, Marco.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Marco. Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate you all.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is another appointment. New appointment, Christine Lundberg.
Great, Counselor Nolan.
If we could bring Christine in.
She's already in.
Hello, I'm here.
Excellent, how you doing, Christine?
I'm doing well, thank you.
If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Gloucester Cultural Council.
I'd be happy to. Um, my career has been spent in, uh, working with arts education and cultural at organizations. And, uh, having moved to Cape Ann while ago, I started a small film company and decided that Gloucester was a very rich place for film production. And my first film was about Virginia Lee Burton. And I'm sure most of you remember one of her books at least, Mike Mulligan and the Steam Shovel. So, um, I've continued to do that work on Virginia Lee Burton, and I'm currently working on a film about the Follycove designers. Gloucester is a very rich place for material and, um, activities that deal with art and culture, so, um, I feel that I could bring my talents to that, that activity, and especially as we're looking toward the four hundredth anniversary, there is just no end of things that can be done to celebrate Gloucester's very rich heritage and arts and culture.
Excellent, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
With that being said, I'll read the motion. On a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Christine Lundberg to the Gloucester Cultural Council, term to expire two fourteen twenty-five, and I so move.
Um, the motion was made by Counselor Nolan, and I think it was Counselor Worthley? And, and wasn't looking, uh, Counselor Grow, I'm sorry. Um, is there a discussion, counselors? Um, Counselor Gross?
Yes, I just, um, enthusiastically support Christine's, um, appointment to this. Known Christine for a while now, there's no one better suited. She's, um, her life has been immersed in the cultural aspects of, of almost every asset, f- aspect of, of our, uh, civilization and world and local community, and so, uh, I highly endorse, um, Christine for this, this position with the cultural council.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to speak, Counselor Grow?
Uh, similarly, I'm, I'm really, really excited about her, uh, or being part of this. Um, she offered up, uh, my daughter Matilda's first, uh, silver screen debut with her documentary on the, on Virginia Lee Burton, and, uh, it's lovely and wonderful, and if you haven't seen it, you should find it and see it. Get it out there, put it on Netflix, Christine.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Tony.
Anyone else like to speak? Um, so I will just add that, um, I'm proud to say Christine is, um, one of my constituents in Ward Four, and I've known her for quite a while, and, um, she is, is perfectly suited for this position, so I'm very excited that she put her name in the hat. And she's going to be a major player on this important board. Um, so thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Phil.
Um, so we're ready for a roll call vote. Um, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you, Christine.
Counselor Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes, enthusiastically.
And Counselor Grow?
You bet.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, Christine, thank you so much.
Thank you, I'm, I'm honored to be a part of the cultural council. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Would anyone like to remove any matter that's on tonight's consent agenda? Um, Counselor Grow?
Uh, council order, uh, number two, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-six.
Two thousand twenty-two oh thirty-six, okay? Anyone else like to, um, remove anything on the consent agenda? Um, Counselor Worthley? Counselor Worthley, you are muted.
I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm looking for on the consent agenda. The mayor submitted a, the final recommendations from the private road working group. Is that something on our agenda we can pull up just for discussion purposes?
Um, well, I, I think I think the mayor's intent is to, um, get to the next step, and right now, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the mayor just wanted us to see um, that, and then there'll be an opportunity for us to, um, have a full discussion. I think the first order of business is that the working group is going to do a presentation with, um, PowerPoint slides for the mayor. And then after that, we'll be ready to get to the next step. So does that answer enough of your question?
Just, is there any council action on that at this point?
Um, well, there, there will be.
At this point, no.
And, and that's what we will, um, we will have to, um, refer that back to O and A for, for review, because there's, there's certainly part of that, and as you look through the documents, I think you'll see that there's quite a bit of, um, action involved, so.
So basically, I was going to ask if you take it aside, is there something we should send to O and A, or is it just information only at this point?
Um, well, right now, like I said, we're going to go through that first step to give the working group an opportunity to present to the mayor. And then after that, we will be making the referrals through the mayor's report to the different subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense? Okay, um, if the mayor's still on the call, if you want to add to that, Mayor Berger, I'm not sure if you are. But I don't, um.
Nope, he's not here.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, so thank you. Um, and I would like to remove, um, let's see, I'm going to remove the two thousand twenty-two oh three five, Counselor Gross, amend the GZO by adding a new section, five point three two, short-term rentals. Um, and, um, I will, um, I will describe that in just a second. So, um, so let's, let's, um, let's approve the consent agenda as, um, without those two matters, um, which are going to take additional conversation. So as amended, um, counselors, is there a motion to approve?
So, some of it.
Second.
Um, motions made by Counselor Grow, I believe I heard Counselor Worthley seconded, yes. Um, uh, roll call vote, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. I'm glad I voted. Um, so now let's go back to the first matter that was taken off, and that was, um, Counselor Grow, you asked to take off, um, item twenty-two oh three six.
I did. Um, I, I, I'm using this as an opportu- opportunistic moment to make a request to, uh, O and A and to the city council in general. Um, that when we approach the, uh, crafting of ordinances and amending ordinances, that we move towards gender neutral pronouns, uh, when we go through, uh, these things that I only, I only caught it because it said provided he shall not use any standing device. We're deleting the word, those words, and I think anytime we have an opportunity, before we do it as a wholesale thing, that we, we, we keep that in mind and, and, and use language that is, is, is appropriate to this, uh, this century.
Absolutely, thank you. Yep, well said. And, um, so the reason why I have, oh, so, so I guess we have to approve that, so, um, so let, let's, um, we, let's approve that referral. Um, roll call vote, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now we're back to the motion that, um, the, um, the matter that I asked to bring forward. And, um, I wanted to note that, um, on this particular order, it affects the entire city. And given that notice to all butters in the city and the situation is impracticable, um, I move that the city council waive the notice to butters under GZO, section one point one, one point four B, set the public hearing date for, for February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and to refer this matter to the Planning and Development and the Planning Board, and I so, shall, I so move.
Second.
Second.
Um, I made the motion, and I think, um, Jason Grow seconded it. Um, is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, uh, roll call up, Counselor, uh, O'Neil, go ahead, you have the floor on the discussion.
Thank you. I, I got a, an email and a phone call from someone who does short-term rentals, and she was surprised that it was already before the council because she never got a notice. And from my understanding, you're requesting that butters are not noticed. And I.
So, um, so to, so this is something that we, we typically do when it would affect a mailing to thirty thousand people, um, which would be impracticable in terms of expense. And, um, and that's why we make this, um, part of our practice. Um, and I would say that we're going to have several months of vetting time where people are going to be able to send their comments to counselors, to, um, we're going to have several public hearings, one in, in the Planning Board, and also with us, and, um, it will be a a, a very well-vetted process, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I think we're ready to vote that to, um, accept that as being referred. Um, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the unanimous consent agenda.
Um, so counselors, um, we do have one add to, um, uh under the unanimous consent agenda. And I want to make sure that you have all read what it is. Um, specifically, it's a memorandum from the CFO requesting loan authorization, the amount of nineteen million dollars to fund the renovation and related expenses, the Gloucester Police Station and courthouse renovation project, and that is to be referred to B and F. So um, I move to um to approve the unanimous consent agenda, calendar as noted.
Second.
Council Worthley has seconded. Is there a discussion, councillors? Um, so our roll call vote, um, Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
The unanimous consent agenda has been approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of November seventeenth.
Great. And I would like to commend Council Memard for hanging in there. I'm not feeling well, and um, thank you. So you have the floor, Council Memard. Thank you.
And and I requested, uh, because if I try to talk too much, I'm going to cough a lot. And so I requested that our vice chair, uh, councillor Gross, uh, make the presentation on behalf of Budget and Finance.
Terrific. Council Gross, you have the floor. So um, the first matter is um, I'll let you introduce it. Thank you.
So the fir- the first matter up is a um memorandum from the police chief requesting the acceptance of a state nine-one-one training grant in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Um, I don't see the chief is not here. This is for um training for the nine-one-one responders, which is basically the whole police department. Um, and I think it's a grant that comes through every year. Is that true? I'll ask either John or Kenny to um back me up on that.
Yes, that is correct. It is a reoccurring grant.
Yes, I agree with Kenny. Happens every year.
Well, that's good. And um, and so it it does, it recovers, uh, I mean, it covers the um, the training courses and it and salaries for the personnel to um attend these training courses. And then most of them are online for the uh, the nine-one-one responders.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're ready for the motion.
All right, um. Let's see here. Make sure I got the right one. Yep. On a motion by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law forty-four, section fifty-three A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, a FY twenty-twenty-three State nine-one-one Department Training Grant Program for one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. This grant period is from October twenty, twenty-twenty-two through June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Gross and seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Gross?
Uh, next order of business is a heavy lift here from the clerk's office to pay for um some uh FY twenty-two um bill with FY twenty-three money. So, on a motion by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council, in accordance with Mass General Law forty-four, section four sixty-four, approve payment of a prior prior year's invoice from Amazon Business, P O Box zero three five one eight four, Seattle, Washington, provided a digital cameraing camera memory card and Scotch heavy-duty packing tape to the city clerk's office in January of twenty-twenty-two for the purpose of paying invoice number one V six X dash seven D one nine dash K nine K NF dated January one, twenty-twenty-two, as paid with an FY to be paid with with FY twenty-three general fund, general clerk's budgeted funny uh budgeted funds account, as noted, city clerk supplies for total of twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. And I so move.
Second.
Council Gross um made the motion, Council Worthley seconded, Council Grow has his hand raised.
If if we don't pay this, will this affect uh Jeff Bezos' bottom line anyway?
We'll we'll take, we'll take a collection, I think, if uh.
No, but it might, it might impact our credit rating and make it more expensive to uh build new schools and firehouses, police stations.
All right, let's go.
Okay, uh, John Dunn, go ahead.
Um, if you don't approve it, I'll pay it myself.
I think somebody might offer. Thank you.
I'm gonna vote no now.
Uh, the motion's been made and it's been seconded, so let's do a roll call vote. Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business.
All right, next, next order of business is a memorandum from the Director of uh Information Services requesting the acceptance of E-Rate Category Two funds in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eight cents. So this, the E-Rate is, these funds are to be used to offset the cost of replacing aging network switches across both the city of Gloucester, in- including Gloucester Public Schools. Um, it, I think this is part of a uh, uh, it's a FCC E-Rate program that directly reimburses the vendor for these um, these, these necessary upgrades um in our network. And I wish um Grant explained it much better at B and F than I can right now. So I don't know if Kenny or or John have any uh, any more insight on that. Okay.
John Dunn?
Uh, yep, hold on. Thank you. Uh, yes, so this is part of the revenue that's coming in to um supplant the two point one five million dollars that we approved uh a couple of weeks ago for um you know, just IT infrastructure across the city. And so part of this is reimbursable by E-Rate. Um, and we thank them very much for doing that. So we just want to be able to accept that.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion, Council Gross?
There is. Um, on a motion by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law forty-four, section fifty-three A and a half, a gift of tangible gifts to the city of Gloucester from the Universal Service Administration Company, a twenty-twenty-two Schools and Library FCC E-Rate program towards the purchase of replacing aging network switches across the city of Gloucester, including Gloucester Public Schools, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eight cents, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
A motion made by Council Gross and seconded by Council Worthley. Without objection, I would just like to note that um it was tangible goods, not gifts. But I don't think we have to go and uh amend the motion, but I just want to be clear because it's a big, it's a big amount, fifty-nine thousand.
It says a gift of tangible goods, right?
Okay, so, right. Um, so um, is there further discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. And we are almost done with B and F. Um, we've got two more issues. So uh, next order, Council Gross?
Order is a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. On a motion by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four, section fifty-three A to support the council on aging in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the following members and business partners within our community. Uh, the Gloucester Bank, Richard and Nancy Howard, Irene Christ, uh, Joseph Molar, Molnar, Jerry Favolora, Marilyn Grant, and Barbara Boswell. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
I bark, yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business.
Next order of business is a memorandum from the Veteran Services Director requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. On a motion by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four, fifty, uh, section fifty-three A to support K-Band Veteran Services in the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from the following members and business partners within our community, Bank Gloucester and Robert Kohler, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Gross or seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Council Gross. And Council Memard, I hope you're having like a hot tea right now because I know that you are really hanging in there. And um, if you're ready, you are. Good. Okay. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of November fourteenth.
Council Nolan?
There is no items in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Um, on November sixteenth, the, there was no meeting of the Planning and Development Standing Committee, so there's no Standing Committee Report. The next item is scheduled public hearings, public hearing twenty-twenty-two zero thirty-one, loan order twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero eight, loan authorization request in the amount of six million, five hundred thousand dollars for the O'Malley School window and door replacement project.
Thank you. And I'd like to open the public hearing and ask that a member of administration um addresses the council. I don't know if it's going to be um John Dunn, Kathy Clancy, Ben Lummis.
Well, I will, you know, I will kind of head it off and say that the uh, the loan order came um out of the administration. Um, but I'm going to hand this off to um Mr. Lummis and and Ms. Clancy.
Okay. Um, Superintendent Lummis, you are muted. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, Kat, I'll I'll head this off, then then you'll add as later if necessary?
If necessary, yeah.
Uh, so hello again, folks. So just want to um apprise you of uh, this project, again, working with the Mass School Business uh, Mass School Building Authority, uh, who are treating us very well these days here in Gloucester. Um, and we have good partnership with them. This project is part of their, through their Accelerator Repair Project. It's to replace the windows and exterior doors at the O'Malley Middle School. These are original um doors and windows, so fifty, yeah, exactly fifty years old. Um, they are single uh, single pane windows, which means that they are uh very energy, energy inefficient. And they actually make climate control quite difficult. Um, without the proper glazing and two pane, double panes, uh, they're often uh make our uh learning spaces too cold in winter and too hot in the warmer months. So we've worked with the uh MSBA um on the Accelerator Repair Project. And the total cost of the project would be um six point four million dollars. They will reimburse uh the city of Gloucester about sixty percent of that, fifty-eight percent of that cost, which is uh, they would, a a total possible reimbursement of about three point seven million dollars. And so the city share, city share would be two point eight million dollars. Um, a couple of really important pieces here is that uh, at this point, um, just recently, the MSBA announced that they were closing down the Accelerator Repair pro- uh program um for new applicants. Um, we're not sure how long that's going to be. Um, which means that um, if we do not go for it this point, uh, we we will, first of all, lose the nearly sixty, sixty percent re- reimbursement, reimbursement, so almost four million dollars in state aid on this. And we really wouldn't know uh when we would have, you know, be able to get back in line for it. So um, this is in some way, this is a a a, you know, a a important project, obviously. Construction, uh, installation would happen this summertime. So we are on a, you know, accelerate, that when they say accelerated pair, they're not kidding in this case. Uh, we are anticipating, actually, when we submit a statement of interest, um, I I think about a year ago, uh, we thought it might take a couple of years to get in, but they accepted us because of, after a site visit. And um, and they accepted us because of the the condition of the uh, you know, windows and doors and their age. And so this is an opportunity we have to move forward uh quickly. Um, an important piece, you know, of our long-term capital um efforts, facility efforts to maintain our buildings at a high quality. Um, and obviously, windows and exterior envelope appears, and climate control is an important piece, so. Kathy, if anything to add, feel free, and then I'm happy to answer questions if necessary.
I don't have anything to add.
John Dunn?
Kathy, um, John Dunn?
Well, I I again, I would kind of support what the superintendent has said. Um, you know, we we have a situation where we're able to get into the Accelerator Repair Program, which may be kind of going away for a little bit. So we're in, um, we have, you know, great support from MSBA, as we've had in the past and a couple of other projects. And, you know, this is something that we need to do. And it's not going to get any cheaper. Um, if this is put out for another two, three, four years. So um, a- a- again, you know, in in terms of our approach, the city's approach to buildings, we need to do, we need to do to kind of make the buildings as best we can for the future.
Thank you, John.
Um, well, I do, I do, I do want to add one thing. Um, you know, it, this is for the comfort and learning environment of students, but it's also important for our teachers who, you know, are constantly um, you know, accommodating situations that are less than ideal. So this is a wonderful opportunity to be able to address that um and do, you know, the infrastructure in our buildings that, you know,
um, and do, you know, the infrastructure in our buildings that, you know, windows and doors are not flashy, um, you know, like a a new whatever, but, but they're so important to the quality of the building going forward, so, um, thanks for considering this.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications or correspondences?
There are no communications.
Um, councilors, do you have any questions to ask? Uh, Council Nolan.
I just have one question, and we're talking windows and doors, but, um, I'm imagining that there's a, um, a purpose of security as well as environmental and, uh, weather situations to this, am I correct?
Um, there, there is, we, we, you know, completed the entryway project, which, which is also obviously windows and doors, so normally, this type of project would include the front entryway, but it doesn't this time because we've already taken care of that. The only other, um, you know, real piece of security on this would be, we will be able to, we will install some, a few card readers at some of the exterior doors, and that makes it easier for staff, you know, when, when, when students are out, outdoors, either learning or, you know, recess, to enter in and out easily, um, without, uh, you know, propping doors open, which is something we've essentially eliminated, but still, um, you know, that's always, it's always a, a risk, is probably doors open, so, so that, that's the one component here where we're able to add some card readers and that eliminate that, that, um, that need and possibility in practice, really.
Great, thank you. And the other questions, councilors, uh, Council Memard.
I know we discussed this at, at the Budget and Finance Committee level, but it would also be, I'd like to have you comment, Ben, if you wouldn't mind, about the, uh, anticipated e- energy savings that would result from this upgrade in these windows and, and in terms of long-term costs and, and, uh, quality of the, the environment, it would seem like they would contribute to that.
They absolutely will, I, 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 I'll be, I can't keep providing numbers in terms of exact energy efficiency, but if you think about the technology in terms of windows, um, you know, over the last fifty years, it's, it's monumental, and we are literally operating, these are large, as you know, O'Malley is a very large, you know, large windows in, in so many places around the building, classrooms, but also, um, you know, cafeteria and the Learning Commons, uh, those are all being replaced with clear story windows, um, they're all single pane, uh, which of course are the least efficient, um, and, you know, have the u- a unique characteristic of, um, making, uh, you know, uh, cooling much harder in the summer and heating much more difficult in the winter, and so they really, you, you get a double bang for your buck, so to speak. But when you have the double pane windows, um, it'll make, uh, just climate control easier. It'll, um, you know, block out the, the sun or, you know, give that, that, um, uh, I guess conduction, perhaps it is, that warming from the sun. Um, it'll also keep the cold out in the wintertime, so I don't know exactly how we do energy, our energy cost, but, um, I can assure you that the building immediately becomes much more energy efficient.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? Um, Council Gross.
Yeah, um, Ben or Kathy or John, um, there's some urgency on this, isn't there, because there's a ninety-day window and we're getting towards the end of that, is that not correct?
Thank you, yes, there, yes, exactly, that's an important piece, uh, Council Gross. Uh, we were approved into the prop, um, voted by the MSBA Board in, in late August. They gave us the, uh, project funding agreement, uh, you know, documentation, um, in, in September sixteenth. We have ninety days from that time to, uh, you know, verify to them that the, um, funding is in place. Uh, and so that's, that's December fifteenth, I believe, so you're right, there, is, there is urgency on, on deciding this, um, very soon. Otherwise, we have to go back to them and, 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 uh, give them the bad news.
Thank you, Council Gross. Any further questions, councilors, uh, uh, John Dunn?
Um, so, yes, to, to, um, um, the superintendent's point and, and the councillor's point, um, yes, so if we get to the vote tonight, I would appreciate a, uh, vote of reconsideration.
Thank you. Further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing and ask BNF, uh, for a committee report. And I will turn it over to, um, Vice Chair of BNF, uh, Tony Gross. Council Gross, you.
I got it, yep.
No, sorry.
So, yeah, this was, this was brought up at the, um, you know, obviously at BNF, and, um, you know, the things that were just discussed were discussed there. Um, also, you know, that this is, this loan order is a reimbursed, reimbursed, um, the cost of the city for this, um, six and a half million will be two point four million, um, you know, if you do the math, at thirty-nine percent, that's a pretty good return rate. Also, the fact that they're discontinuing this, um, this program was also discussed at length, so pretty much everything that was discussed here this evening by, um, the superintendent, um, Chair, Chairperson Clancy and, and CFO Dunn, that, uh, was the same discussions that we had at BNF.
Okay, so, um, could you, um, make the motion?
I will make the motion, um, don't fall asleep because this is a long one. On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the loan order as follows. Order that the City of Gloucester appropriates the amount of six million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs for replacement of windows and doors roof at O'Malley, at Ralph B. O'Malley Middle School, including the payment of all costs incidental or related to the, thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the city may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, set amount to be extended under the direction, expended under the direction of the appropriate school building committee. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow set amount under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project cost the city incurs in excess of any grant approved and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city. Further, provided, provided further that any grant from the city, that the city may receive from MSBA for the projects shall not exceed the lesser of sixty-one and ten and two-hundredth percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by the grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. Further order, that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further order, that the Treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the general law, any and all bonds authorized for this order, and to provide any information and execute all documents as Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's made by Council Gross or seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors?
Thank you, Tony.
My pleasure, Scott. I can only imagine you reading that whole mouthful. I have.
Council Gross, you have the floor.
So, I mean, eh, eh, any of us who have been around for a little while have known, you know, that, that Gloucester was not the best at maintaining their facilities. And, um, you know, it seems like this, we're doing a lot of catch-up right now, and, uh, it's completely necessary because it's, it's pennies for dollars when you really do it and when it's needed. And, um, and on another note, in my house, when we changed the windows, there was a huge difference between the, uh, our, our energy costs, so I firsthand know what window, you know, upgrading windows from the seventies through the current date, and, um, so, this is a really worthwhile project that's overdue, um, and I'm glad that we're taking it up, and, and thankfully, we got, that the, the school department got in with MSBA before this program ended, because this is, um, we're, you know, to get almost sixty-two percent paid for is a, a huge, uh, accomplishment. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, um, anyone else like to speak, um, on this motion? Seeing none, I'd like to say a couple of things. My son only graduated from O'Malley nine years ago, and I spent a lot of time in that school. And I have to say that, um, back then, it was only forty years old, and now it's fifty. Um, this particular repair is so necessary, this, it's an upgrade, it's energy efficient. The doors will work well, it will be more secure, these things are so important, and I also want to just clarify that, um, the program is on hold, it's not discontinued, but I am just grateful that we have an opportunity here to, um, to be considered for this, and I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this, so, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak um, on this particular motion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Council Jota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yeah.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, this have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there a motion to reconsider?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Council Gross. It was seconded by Council Nolan. Does everyone understand what we need to do for motion to reconsider?
It's just the opposite, right?
Exactly, Frank, you, thank you. Um, we'll start with you, Council Jota.
No.
Council Memard.
No.
Council Nolan.
No.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neal.
No.
Council Worthley.
No.
Council Gilman, no. Council Gross.
No.
Council Grow.
No.
The motion to reconsider fails. Zero in favor, nine opposed. So we did that, John Dunn can sleep tonight and not worry about it, so, um, thank you so much, um, all of you for, um, your participation and for Council Gross for filling in for Council Memard, who's still on the call, as sick as he is, to be part of this vote, so thank you both. Um, next order of business, um, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty-two dash zero thirty-two, to amend Gloucester Code of Orders, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Committees, Division Ten, Section two dash five oh eight, Committee for the Arts, Section two dash five oh nine, Composition, Appointment, and Terms of Members.
Thank you, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's a member of administration who would like to speak on this.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam President.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, so this, this amendment is before the City Council, um, as a result of reinvigorating the Committee for the Arts, it became apparent that because of the, um, increased interest in members of the community beca- coming a part of the Committee for the Arts, it would be beneficial to increase the number of members. So the amendment before you is to increase the number to seven members with two alternates. That also explicitly sets out the process for the staggered terms, which is a part of, um, the term process for, uh, committees under the city charter.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Um, we have a hand raised for CK, um, if you would bring CK in, that would be great, um. Madam Clerk and CK, if you could introduce yourself in your dress, and, um, you have up to three minutes to speak on this matter.
Oh, hi, this is Catherine Ryan at Seventeen High Rock, and, um, I had two points, um, I am happy to see the increase, and I want to X out the line where it says the mayor in office shall continue his membership on the committee for the term which he has elected, which was added, which wasn't in the earlier packet when it was at O N A when I spoke before. Um, I really think that, like, with elections, when it's over, you know, it's over, and I don't, um, I, we actually ran into the problems with that related to the cultural district and other initiatives when I was involved with all these different committees for over eight years, where, you know, people didn't step down, who were let go from organizations, and it was very complicated for people that were newly hired, and, you know, that, that, that role should not be stuck in there with that sentence, um, and then also, I think the, you know, where it says he the whole way through, if we can fix that as well.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to see the, there wasn't a change of moving the, especially the, the permanent decisions, um, outside of the council body, so I, I really appreciate you guys, you know, going over that and having a discussion in O N A.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are no communications, no.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Nolan.
On a motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Worthley, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend GZO, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Committees, Division Ten, Section two dash five oh nine, Composition, Appointment, and Terms of Members, as described in the document attached to General Counsel's Revised Memorandum on October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, as amended as follows. Section two dash five oh nine, Composition, Appointment, and Terms of Members. The Committee for the Arts shall consist of seven members and two alternate members appointed by the mayor and deformed, confirmed by the City Council. All appointed members shall be residents of the city. The mayor or their designee shall be an ex officio, non-votant member of the committee. The members shall serve staggered four-year terms. Initially, or in any instance where the committee is reconstituted, one member shall serve for a one-year term. Two members shall serve a two-year term. One member shall serve a three-year term, and one member shall serve a four-year term. Uh, the mayor in office shall continue membership, strike the word his, membership on the committee for the term for which he is elected, and ISO move.
Second. Most made by Council Nolan, Council Worthley, and I bet Council Grow is gonna ask, say he or she, is that correct?
It's e- either he or she or they are, and also, uh, a correction, if we could, uh, initially or in any instance where you read it correctly, it's just written incorrectly on the, uh, on the document, so I, I'd like to change that to they are, or I think they are most appropriate.
Okay, um, are we, do we need to formally amend that, councilors? Um, I think, I think we're okay, we understand what the, the two recommended changes, so without objection on the rules, I, I'm comfortable with, um, that we got that in the record. Okay? Thank you. Um, so, motion's been made. Thank you. Um, so motion's been made and a sec, and we've had a seconded. Is there further discussion, counselors?
I just want to make sure we get that language correct, and I don't want to be a stick in the mud here. The mayor in office shall continue their membership, or we're not having any word in there, on the committee for the term for which.
Counsel Nolan did not say any word there. He just said.
It's grammatically correct.
The mayor in office shall continue membership on the committee for the term for which they are elected.
That is correct. Thank you.
Perfect.
Yep. Any further discussion, counselors?
I'm sorry, there was another amendment that Catherine Ryan suggested. Um, and I'm sorry that I'm not remembering exactly what it was. Um, does anybody else remember what it might have been?
Um, Counsel Nolan?
Uh, Catherine was concerned, um, of the, a, a few little issues. Um, one was the his, uh, was an issue for her. And then she mentioned something else that I didn't really find in the language that we were reading that her, her comment was.
I, I recall that she said that we had fixed that since, um, O N A, if I'm not mistaken.
Would it be out of order to ask her to?
No, it would, it would be out of order, I believe. Where? Okay, um, so there may be further discussion, counselors? Throw snakes. Um, Counsel, um, C A O Joe Cahill, you are unmuted. I mean, you are muted, sorry. I mean, unmuted, sorry. Okay, um, further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard. Counsel Memard, um, I believe might be, he, he, he left to go to sleep because he's not feeling well. Um, so absent, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthing.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-two dash zero thirty-three, amend Gloucester Code of Ordnance, Chapter Eleven, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors, and special events, Section eleven dash three B, local license slash permit requirements for fixed vending locations, procedure to obtain in Section eleven dash five, fixed vending site specific locations six.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and, um, would anyone like to speak in favor of this? Um, if any of you are on the call right now, I know that there is a vendor that's on the call, on Joan, I think. If you would like to speak in favor or opposition, this is the opportunity right now in the public hearing. Um, I don't see any other names that I recognize as vendors, but if you wish to speak, if you would raise your hand so we can call you, and if anyone else on the call would like to speak in favor or in opposition, this is your time. Okay, um, seeing none. Is there any, um, correspondence, Madam Clerk?
There are no communications.
Thank you. Um, counselors, do you have any questions? Seeing none. I would like to close the public hearing and ask for a committee report from Counsel Nolan.
On a motion by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend GZO, Chapter Eleven, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors, and special events. Article Two, hawkers and peddlers, Section eleven dash three B, local license permit requirement for fixed vending locations, procedure to obtain in Section eleven-three C, local license permit requirement for fixed vending locations, procedure to obtain in Section eleven-five, fixed vending site specific locations six as follows. Um, Article Two, hawkers and peddlers, Section eleven-two, license permit required. No vendor shall sell goods, wares, merchandise, or services prohibited by Mass General Law, Chapter one oh one. No vendor shall sell goods, wares, merchandise, or services unless duly licensed by the director of the standards of the Commonwealth and/or permitted by the city licensing commission, except for those articles permitted to be sold without a license under Mass General Law, Chapter one oh one, Section seventeen. Section eleven dash three, local license permit requirement for fixed vending locations, procedure to obtain. A, anyone either principal or agent that sells from a fixed location not licensed or required to be licensed under the definition in Mass General Law, Chapter one oh one, as a transient vendor or a hawker and peddler must first procure a permit from the local licensing authority for sale of goods, wares, or merchandise allowed to be sold under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one oh one, Section sixteen. A local permit is required for vending, holding only a state license. B, applicants for a fixed location permit for those areas established by this chapter within the city shall follow the sealed bid procedure as outlined in subsection C of this section. The cost for such permit shall be not less than two hundred dollars annually with no maximum established by the city council. Permits will be issued for up to, strike six, nine, specific locations throughout the city as approved by the city council. The city council should have the right to adopt and implement further lawful regulations and restrictions consistent with this article. Number one, prior to bidding for a fixed location, a vendor shall be required to provide proof of valid current hawkers and peddlers license and proof that they are a disabled veteran if applicable as defined in Section eleven-one. Two, vendors shall disclose general scope of sales. We're gonna add, number three, vendors with a fixed location permit shall be onsite no later than July fourth and open for business a minimum of twenty-one days for the period between May fifteenth and September fifteenth. Add, number four, failure to comply with a July fourth or twenty-one day minimum requirement shall cause the individual, firm, or corporation permits to be revoked and be disqualified from applying for a fixed vendor location for the following two years. Add five, in the event of a prolonged, unseasonable, inclement weather, or other unforeseen circumstances, a fixed location permutee may appeal to the licensing commission for an exemption from the July fourth and/or twenty-one day requirements. Approved permits in assigned locations shall be chosen by sealed bid procedure by the city's purchasing department on or before the first business day in February at nine AM of each year. C, sealed bid procedure will be as follows. Sealed bids will be submitted to the city's purchasing department following public notice and from the first secular day in January to the last business day in January each year. Further, all bids received to be opened by the purchasing department will be accompanied by a certified cashier's check in the amount of the bid payable to the city. Unsuccessful bidders' checks will be returned immediately following the bid opening. The sealed bid will be date and timestamped in the purchasing department. The purchasing department will open the sealed bids and they will, if there is a tie between two or more vendors on the bid amount, then the bidder or vendor who is a disabled veteran shall be given preference over all other bidders, provided they meet all other bid requirements. If there is a, a tie between two or more disabled veterans, or if there is a tie where there is no disabled veteran, the high bidders may resubmit a sealed bid within two business days. Section eleven dash four, identification required. All fixed vendors operate within the city shall be required to prominently display a laminated permit obtained from the office of the city clerk, which provides the name and addresses of, and bears a recent photograph of the permutee. Section eleven-five, fixed vending sites specific, specific locations, strike six, add nine. A, the following are specific locations for vending. Number one, Washington Street, ten feet north from its intersection with Poplar Street. Number two, Washington Street, Waterside at Plum Cove Beach. Number three, Western Avenue, Waterside, between the intersection of Middle Street and the public land in east of Middle Street site. Number four, it's to be reserved. Number five is the visitor center parking lot at Stage Fort Park. Number six is Rogers Street in front of the Fitch U Lane parking lot at the southwest corner of the east entrance to Harbor Loop. Seven is to be reserved. Eight is to be reserved. Nine would be Rogers Street, twenty-five feet from its intersection with Harbor Loop at the southwest corner of the west entrance to Harbor Loop. B, should a fixed vending location established under the section be located in the area designated as a no parking area pursuant to Chapter twenty-two, the no parking prohibition shall not apply to the fixed vendor location, and I so move.
Very good.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan. That was a long one. Thank you. And it was seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Um, so I would like to suspend the rules of procedure right now because Joan Bede is, um, was not able to log in and she has sent me an email. She told me she wanted to speak tonight. She was having technical issues. So without objections, counselor, I would like to just read to you what she wanted to say in the public hearing. Um, vendor, um, from Joan Bede's. Um, my apologies, I'm having trouble logging into this meeting. As the flower lady at Grand Circle for forty-four years, I support the twenty-one days proposal. Serious vendors take pride in their location, keep it clean, make it look presentable and appealing. This proposal would curb any fly-by-nighters. I feel a great deal of responsibility to my loyal customers. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, Joan. So I just wanted to, um, to read that. So, um, thank you, Joan, for sticking with us and having the creativity, send me an email, uh, because you couldn't get on tonight. I appreciate it. Um, Counsel Grow, and then I'm gonna let Counselor, um, Gross speak to this because this was an order that he took the lion's share of the work. Um, so Counsel Grow, your hand is raised.
It is. I, I, oh, hang on. I wanted to take a moment just, uh, while we're suspending rules. Um, I have a question, a clarification that in the, in the committee recommendation, it was said fixed vending site location six. Is that meant to be nine as well in the, in the motion? Because it doesn't correspond with the corrections later on.
I, I believe that I, I struck the two or three places where it said six and added nine.
Okay, it's not in the, in the motion here, so I just wanted to make sure that that was consistent.
Yeah, I think under Section eleven-five, fixed vending site specific location, strike six, add nine.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
And, and I have one small thing to add, um, where we're, um, suspending the rules of procedure right here. Um, on the first item, um, under Section eleven dash three, um, A, then you did B, and then under one, the, the only thing that I want to just add is that it says under one, um, and you read it, Counsel Nolan, I just wanna, I want to insert what we've added. Prior to bidding for a fixed location, a vendor shall be required to provide proof of valid current hawkers and peddlers license and proof that they are disabled veterans by adding, if applicable, as defined in Section eleven dash one. Um, but you did an amazing job reading all this, so thank you. It was long, appreciated. So at this point, um, I'd like, um, Counsel Gross, if you would, I mean, Counsel Gross and I, um, submitted this order together, but he did ninety percent of the work, so, um, I'd like him to just explain to counselors, um, why you're supporting this order.
Um, well, I mean, this, it sort of came to light that there was some, um, omissions in this ordinance when we had the taco truck, um, discussion uh, down the beach and, you know, the, the kerfuffle that was created by the, the taco truck. Um, and it, it came to light that, that it could be that, um, that some people could possibly buy these up. There's no protection um, to make certain that actual serious vendors who are going to be uh, contributing to the city and now that we're in a, a, a completely different economy than we were when this, even when this ordinance was written in the seventies, it's, you know, we're, we're much more mobile now and, uh, so it, it just seemed that needed to have some of these safeguards to make sure that these spots get used. And, um, and so that's why I put in, uh, you know, help, help create some of this language about the, the limitations that they have to fulfill. Um, and that, that's basically the gist of it. And the rest was kind of like just some cleanup. I mean, there was always nine locations. I don't know why it ever said six. It's just that there's three are reserved, so whoever developed the ordinance originally intended there be nine. Um, and then there was just a couple of places that the language is a little bit confusing, particularly with the tie, there was no real mechanism um, for, uh, for solving a tie that didn't, uh, have a, a disabled veteran involved or, you know, the unlikelihood, but the possibility of two disabled veterans, um, submitting a, uh, uh, the, the exact number for the same site. So those, that was basically it, just picking, cleaning up some language and adding in this section that, that really helps us make sure that these sites are, are used for the benefit of both the vendor and the city.
Great, thank you, Counsel Gross. Um, anyone else like to speak, um, on this motion? Um, Counsel O'Neil and then Counsel Nolan. Actually, Counsel O'Neil, may I go to Counsel Nolan first? Because typically we ask the O N A person to speak first. So, um, so Counsel Nolan, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to thank, uh, yourself and Tony for bringing this forward. It was a consideration of that what people were talking about after the, uh, meeting and on the taco truck. Um, and I think this is good work and it cleaned a lot of things up um, to make it easier for the real people that want to do this for a living and work hard for it to maintain their livelihood. And great work, guys.
Thank you, Counsel Nolan. Um, Counsel O'Neil, you have the floor.
Yes, it was definitely good work and thank you. Um, I don't know what reserved means. Can you tell me?
Counsel Nolan.
All right, so typically we, we have these three spots open in case something else comes up. So let's say they want to put a, a, a fixed vendor um, on Condolin Road and Magnolia Avenue at, at my industrial park. They can apply for it.
Okay.
Clean up also would be that, you know, it's in the ordinance that there was a no parking situation that wouldn't apply to the vendor. Um, but typically we're, we're able to be licensed for nine fixed locations. Three are unassigned, but could be applied for through the city and the council, I imagine, and.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Um, Counsel Grow has his hand raised. Counsel Grow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just for clarification, there's nothing to prevent us from, from going above nine, correct? I mean, that nine is just a, a number that was arbitrarily come at, came, come to it at, at a previous time. If we decided that we wanted to have more vendor locations, we could go above the nine by changing the ordinance, correct?
Right, we'd have to amend the ordinance and go through the process of, um, public hearing. Counsel Nolan, I spoke for you. I shouldn't have. Would you answer that? I'm sorry.
No, I'll let you speak for me.
Thank you. You're so nice. Counsel Majota.
Uh, no, just great work by, uh, Tony and Val on this, um, and just talking to a few of the vendors, um, them having positive feedback for this and, um, showing that, that we do care for the small businesses. It's just great. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Worthing.
Yes, I'd like to add, good work, Counsel Gilman and Counsel Gross. Um, this is good for. Yes, I'd like to add good work, Counsel Gilman and Counsel Gross. Um, this is good for the vendors. It's good for the city's bottom line because we're getting some revenue coming in and mostly it's good for residents. I know when I take my two kids to the beach, sometimes the concession stand is the right thing, but there's no concession stand at Plum Cove and a few other places. And so it's great as a resident to have more diversity of choices. And so I think this is good for everybody's win, win, win. And smart move on protections for having vendors who are actively participating and ties and bidding and things like that. So really good work.
Thank you. So I would like to, um, just say a couple of words. Um, again, thank you, Counsel Gross, for doing the lion's share of the, um, the work on the order and it's appreciated. And I also wanted to thank the five, uh, counselors that were at that, um, very well attended uh, beach meeting at Plum Cove Beach. Um, as I recall, um, Counsel Gross was there, Counsel Worthley, Counsel Grow, Counsel O'Hara was there on phone, uh, Counsel O'Neill was there and I was there and we had a hundred and twenty-five people at that. And it was very, very clear that everyone there felt we should be capitalizing and considering more fixed vendor locations. And, um, what a good time for us to all think in our particular wards, what some possible places might be. Because going forward at any time during the year, you can go and, and add a place and go through the public hearing process to see if, um, your neighborhood would, would like to support another fixed vendor location. So that's really cool. And I also wanted to mention that I did reach out to all six of the current fixed vendors um, before the O and A meeting, just to let them know what was going on. I didn't want them to be startled by seeing something that affected their livelihood in the newspaper and feel suspicious of the merits and what this would do to their business. And so I did reach out to all six and, um, and shared with them the packet and the order. And, um, most of them did call me to have a conversation in the spirit and support. Um, they felt very, very supported. In fact, Counsel Nolan, maybe you could speak to the person that attended, um, O and A. Um, if, if you, if you would, because he came just to listen in and I think he said some, um, you know, was, was definitely excited about this.
Um, I believe it was Paul from the pizza company.
Hmm.
He definitely likes his idea. He enjoys, um, his vending spot. Um, he's done a wonderful job. His pizza's phenomenal. He seems like a really good, good guy. Uh, customers seem to like him. Uh, I think that he just, he supported it and it was nice to have him at the O and A meeting.
Great, thank you. And, um, before I, um, call for the, um, roll call vote, I would like to say that I'm going to recommend that we, um, we have moved to reconsider after the vote because this is a time intense order. And, um, we need to have this done by January first and a council order has to sit for thirty-one days. Um, and we want to make sure that it, that it's not reconsidered if we're all in support of this because that way it, we would not have this effective in the day that it needs to be. So, um, so any further comments, counselors? Seeing none, our roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard, he is absent. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross? Counsel Gross, you're muted.
It should have unmuted. Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Is, thank you, Counsel Grow, um, would like to, um, make motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Nolan, I think has, has had his hand raised. Um, um, everyone understands what we have to do and, um, we'll start with, uh, Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Mem- Memard is absent. Counsel Nolan?
No.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Counsel Worthley?
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross?
No.
Counsel Grow?
Nope.
Um, motion to reconsider fails. Zero in favor, eight opposed and one absent. Awesome. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Individual counselors discussion including reports by appointed counselors to the committees. Okay.
Um, so I would like to, um, report on item one. And, um, it's just a brief matter to report that the individual's attorney that could not be present at tonight's executive session, um, that we recommended in our open session tonight, that we postpone the executive session out until December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Tuesday at four forty-five. Um, so, um, and I also had the um, presentation on the Council on Aging and Dogtown Preservation Commission. And, um, with your permission, counselors, I, I'd like to wait until the next meeting only because, um, uh, by then we're going to have a second Dogtown Preservation Commission meeting. And I think it's best that at that point, um, I have a couple to, um, to cover because prior to that, we hadn't met until May, um, and it was always during Zoom. And now we have the opportunity to meet in person. Um, so who else? Um, and, and I guess that's it for this section. So at this point, I will ask for the final order of business. Madam Clerk.
Counsel's request to the mayor.
Awesome. So we're going to start in roll call. So Counsel, Counselor Majota, you have the floor for any requests to the mayor.
Zero for me.
Thank you. Counsel Memard is absent. Counsel Nolan?
Uh, no request for the mayor, but I want to shout out to, uh, Ringo Tarr in the Christmas Committee for Kent Circle, looking so good and looking forward to another great season with them.
It's awesome. Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, um, to the mayor that we're asking, the public's asking, uh, there's a report uh, on the Good Harbor Beach Creek that exists. And it'd be welcome to have that released to the council and, uh, to the, obviously, general public as it's a public document. Um, also want to ask the mayor, uh, regarding the fire hydrants that, um, you can validate that they've all been tested. The markings are in place. I don't know if people saw, um, poor sixty-six-year-old lady who didn't make it out of the hose fire in, uh, outside of Turner's Falls or Miller's Falls, which is right off of Route two in western Massachusetts. Um, it's a very powerful, um, YouTube on the fire, which was caught on a security camera. Uh, the poor lady perished, but, um, the value of having water on as close as possible to a fire. And also ask the fire, uh, the mayor to ask the chief to try to keep the apparatus in station, uh, unless they're on a call, trying to keep particularly in the outlying areas, Bayview, West Gloucester, to have an apparatus at central station. God forbid, there's a fire out in Lanesville. Uh, again, it's back to Bridget Clary who perished with a closed Bayview Fire Station. If the apparatus isn't on station, might as well be a closed station. So I asked the mayor to ask the chief to please ask the apparatus be on station. Thank you very much and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, I'd like to request the mayor to order all boards and commissions to record their meetings, either by Zoom or something else. I cannot attend every single meeting every night. Um, but I often listen to them later in the week or on the weekend, if they're on Zoom, meetings such as the EDIC, they, they're not, they're not recorded and the Dogtown Preservation Committee is not recorded. Um, and those are very important. There's a lot of other important boards and commissions that I would like to be able to listen to after the effect, after, after the meeting has ended. Because I, as I said, I cannot attend every meeting every night. So, um, I would like to request that all boards and commissions record their meetings some, some way, if not by Zoom, by some other way. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counsel Worthley?
Yeah, just a couple of things, a couple of announcements. Uh, congratulations to the Sawyer Medal Award winners and the GHS Drama Club for a successful performance this week. Well, last week, I'm sorry. I want to thank the Clean Energy Commission for taking up my proposed ordinance on, um, including renewable energy into new municipal buildings. And they've endorsed that. They're adding some suggestions to help make it even more robust. But if any counselors have any questions uh, about that, please send it to the city clerk's office so they can be distributed to city staff and myself for answering. I think Counsel Nolan is taking that back up, I'm sorry, O and A is taking that back up on December fifth. Um, tomorrow and Thursday, I'm working with Mark Nestor and the Legion posts, um, sorry, the Legion. I'm sorry, I remember I came in the post number, but we're distributing turkey dinners to veterans and their families. And anybody who wants to help, uh, certainly contact Mark or myself and we can enlist you in either driving or cooking or whatever it is that might be of interest to you. Um, and then the last thing I have here is, it is getting colder and colder and colder and there are people in our community who don't have homes in warm places. Um, I've been reading a couple of constituents have been saying that they've got blankets they like to give. They've got um, food they like to give. I know the Food Pantry does an amazing job with that. I would like to see if there's a way, I'm not sure who or what organization, and maybe it's the mayor's office, to talk to us about how we can get more blankets to more people and the right places and clothing and things like that. So obviously, uh, we probably don't want to wait till the next council meeting with something the mayor's office can do in the meantime to communicate to us and the public so that people know where to go to make these donations. Um, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and appreciate seeing all of your smiling faces.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Gross?
Yes, um, Counsel Worthley brought up the, uh, the Drama Club clue. I saw a clue on Friday night. I, um, LOA, uh, it, or LMA, I guess it is, uh, it was hysterical. Those, um, those, those kids were, uh, just phenomenal. It was, uh, you know, the physical comedy, the, uh, just it, you didn't want it to end. Um, it was, it was so good. Um, also the open door, did their food drive this weekend, this Saturday? Um, I was at Starbuck Shop for four hours. We filled up, uh, two of those huge, they're called Gay Lords. Um, they're like four by four by four. So it's, uh, a, uh, half a cord of, uh, of cereals or a cord of cereals. And, um, and I think they took in, I think I heard today it was twenty-eight thousand pounds this weekend of, uh, of donations and that was really good. And I know I have donated winter clothes to the Grace Center, uh, gloves and socks and, and winter coats to the Grace Center. So, um, anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Counsel Gross. Thank you again for filling in, for, um, helping Scott out with a voice tonight. You did a great job. Um, Counsel Grow?
I've already submitted my request to the mayor, uh, through the clerk's office. Uh, what I add to Tony's, uh, comments about the open door and, and for those of you who haven't had a chance to donate for Thanksgiving, there is obviously need that continues on through the holiday season. Uh, there's need actually that continues on three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But I do, uh, do feel, uh, if you feel the need to give, please do, uh, those, those, uh, contributions are always welcome. Uh, Tony does a great job volunteering, by the way. I think that's, uh, awesome. Um, and also just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Oh, who's, who's that little voice? Is that one of your munchkins?
Yeah, he should be. He should be in bed, but I just wanted to comment on the open door, if it's okay. Um, that one Saturday, we all mentioned it. We did over thirteen thousand pounds. Uh, we collected over thirteen thousand pounds of food. And we gave out eight, we gave out eight hundred meal baskets to the community. Uh, so it was an amazing team effort, the volunteers and everyone. So it's in a great organization. Um, that's it. I just wanted to let everyone know.
That's awesome. So I'm the last one to, um, to, to just say a couple of things. I'm proud to see that there are still fourteen attendees listening in on our call, including staff members, Kenny Costa, um, obviously our city clerk, uh, Joey Edseedos is always here for us. Thank you. Um, Pam Toby is still on the call, um, who's Director of Communications and Constituent Services and Holly, um, Dog Willow, um, our HR director. So, um, it's great for, um, to know that you, um, that you're interested in staying to the end of some of these calls, even though you're not really needed to participate, you're interested in, in hearing from us. So, um, and, um, I think we've, um, we've said it all. So thank you, counselors. And is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Grow, sectioned by Counsel Worthley. Oh my gosh, hello there. Goldfish yummy. Give your daddy one.
He's way past his bedtime, but.
Oh my gosh, you, oh, you're so lucky, Frank. All right, um, Counsel Majota, you can raise your double hands on, on your, uh, motion.
It is time for bedtime, so I.
Oh, I love it. Um, it's awesome. Counsel Memard?
Kenny's got one too.
I'm mom's absent.
Sorry. Thank you, Tracy. Um, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Hey, Kenny's got one big kid too.
Oh my gosh, Kenny. Oh, this is so exciting. Can we show and tell Joey? And where's your grandchild? Come on.
Downstairs.
Oh my gosh.
Go wait.
So beautiful. I love it. This is so beautiful.
Thank you.
I think we, I think Counsel Nolan, um, voted to adjourn. Um, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Good night, Moon.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.